Good evening. It's Monday, May 8th, 2017, 7:00 PM. And I'm Gary Rakes, President of Speedway Town Council. And I welcome everyone in attendance and those watching either on YouTube or cable access channel to the Speedway Town Council meeting. This evening, we have a number of items on our agenda. And the first one is the Pledge of Allegiance. But before I ask everyone to do that, I want to make sure that we introduce those that are participating this evening. Eileen Fisher is to my far right and is a member of the council.
Good evening.
And to my immediate right is Jeff Matthews. He's Vice President of Speedway Town Council.
Good evening.
And to my left is Dave Lindsay, also a counselor.
Good evening.
And Jason Delisle is also our fifth counselor. Welcome.
Good evening.
And to his left, we have Jacob Blaisdell, who's Town Manager.
Good evening.
Good evening. And finally, our Clerk Treasurer, Monty Combs.
Happy Monday.
Yes.
I just messed it up somewhere.
So again, the first item on the agenda is the pledge. If everyone would please rise and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. The first, next three items on the agenda are minutes from previous meetings. The first one is the approval of memorandum from April 24th, a regular town council meeting. Are there any changes to this? We'll accept those as presented. And the next item is approval of memorandum from April 24th, executive session of the town council. Any changes to this? We'll accept those as well. And finally, the approval of the memorandum from the April 29th, 2017, special session of the town council. Any changes here? Great. Those are accepted. Next item is President Indianapolis Motor Speedway, Doug Bowles. Please come forward. This is exciting.
Well, thank you, Mr. President, members of council. This is always a good moment when the Indianapolis Motor Speedway can come and thank the town that makes us so special. You know, we think about the 108 years that the Indianapolis Motor Speedway has been located, just sort of over your right shoulders there. And all of the things that this town has allowed the Indianapolis Motor Speedway to do, the growth that we've experienced, the international recognition that we've experienced is much in part because of this town and the way that the neighbors and this town has really adopted us as a neighbor. And we're just so proud of all that's taken place here in the town of Speedway over the last several years, the growth that is here. This is one of those shining lights, not just in Indianapolis or the state of Indiana, but frankly, throughout the country and the world of a way a town can really grow, expand, be great in terms of the economic development, great nightlife. Just, it is so much fun to come to work every day in the town of Speedway. As we lead into the 101st running of the Indianapolis 500, people wondered, what are you going to do that's going to make the Indy 500 different from the 100th? And we told people all along that the 101st was going to be just as important as the 100th, which meant that during the 100th, we needed to sort of announce the 101st logo like we did the year before, from the 99th through the 100th. And we needed to do the same things over the 365 days post-100th as we led into 101st. Well, one of the things we did last year, on 100 days out, we hosted a party at the Indianapolis Motor Speedway. Many of the folks in the town of Speedway came and helped us ring in 100 days from the Indianapolis 500 on the yard of bricks, much like NCAA basketball teams do. When they get a chance to play basketball and they have that midnight basketball for their first practice, we did the same thing. And to see the town of Speedway come out and really help us, 1,500 people on the yard of bricks to kick that off. Well, this year, we did it 101 days out. And one of the things we also did last year was we gave away 100 bottles of milk, 100 days out from the Indy 500. As you know, milk in victory lane is a tradition at the Indianapolis Motor Speedway, has been since the 1930s. This year, we wanted to do the same thing, except we took a little bit of pressure off ourselves. Instead of trying to deliver 100 bottles of milk in six hours, we've been delivering 101 bottles of milk over the 101 days leading into the Indy 500. And I'm here today to present the council with a bottle of milk, signed by Alexander Rossi, the 100th running of the Indy 500 champion. I want to present that to the council. So, Mr. President, if you will, if you could help me find some folks to present this to, I'd really appreciate it.
Yeah. Thanks, Doug. That's a great honor. We've been watching you deliver those, whether it's on TV or reading in the paper or whatever it might be. And it's been a lot of fun to watch you do that. And it talked it over with the counselors. And as much as we would like to be the ones accepting this on camera and everything else, we actually think that our department heads and our town manager should be the one accepting this.
You know, that's a perfect way to do that. I mean, the great thing about this town is the fact that you guys lead from folks like your department managers, the town manager, same as the Indianapolis Motor Speedway. And it's great to recognize those folks. And without the folks behind me, this, our event would not happen. And without you guys and the support you've given us, our event would not happen. This is the most important relationship that the Indianapolis Motor Speedway has and would certainly love to bring those department heads up and we can present them with this.
They don't know that they're being called up. So if our department heads would please come forward, we'd appreciate it. Tim? One up here, guys. Where do you want us? All right. Well, this camera here is which you're actually trying to face. So back by the podium.
They can go to this one right here, too.
Okay. All right.
Chief, why don't you come on in here?
No, no, no. Now, Chief, you've got to take this. Sorry. All right. Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, Chief, you have to drink that before you come up.
Can I bring cereal?
Well, that's a great honor. Thank you again to Doug and all those at the 500. I just want to make a comment that we talked about it kind of individually, but our department heads represent 120, 125-plus employees of the town. And truly, those folks are the ones that do the heavy lifting. We make decisions here, but at the end of the day, we've got tremendous staff and they have great families that allow them to work a tremendous number of hours in the month of May. And so it's just great to have you represented and represent our town this evening. So, thank you. Next item is Citizen of the Month, Connie Harris. If you'd come forward, please.
I won't be quite as exciting as Mr. Bowles, but I am excited about this announcement. Just for those of you that don't know, that the town of Speedway and the Speedway Chamber have formed a relationship where we will present a Citizen of the Month the first Tuesday of every month. And you can nominate somebody by emailing me. And this recipient, I received four nominations for this recipient, which I think is overwhelming. This is somebody that you all know very well, but it goes to Nancy Lawrence. And some of the things that Nancy has done in the past has been she's served on the Speedway redevelopment commission from 2009 to 2016. She organized and was a facilitator of the Motegi Student Exchange for 10 years. She has served on the Chamber Board of Directors for eight years. She was instrumental in reestablishing Speedway Junior Football. And she served on the Speedway Baseball Board for a number of years. And she also was instrumental in serving on the committee that had the overwhelming percentage of passage for our Speedway referendum. So Nancy definitely is very qualified to receive this award. So I would like to have Nancy come up, if she could. And if you wouldn't mind, Mr. President, if you would present her with this plaque, certificate? Can you guys, can you take a picture there? Thank you. We also have a gift certificate from O'Reilly's Irish Pub, which I understand is going to open either Thursday or Friday. So you have a gift certificate to go enjoy that with the family.
Thank you very much.
So a reminder, if you're interested in nominating anyone, please email me at conniesharris@yahoo.com. We have a panel of people that review those. If we get multiple nominations, we do that once a month. And second of all, I just want to remind everyone that we have our first Main Street event to celebrate the 100th and 1st running this Friday, May 12th. It's called Racing Through the Decades from 6:00 to 9:00. It's family-friendly. We'll have vintage race cars on the street. All the restaurants will have music, entertainment, and kids' activities. And it's a, we're not going to close the street. There'll be parking at Foote Lot and 15th and Main. So I hope, encourage everyone to come out for that event on Friday. Thank you.
So, thanks Connie for that. Nancy's not going to escape that easily. We'd like her to come forward.
I promise I wouldn't say anything.
Well, but I've always had this nickname for you, Nancy, is EF Hutton. You don't, you're not the one out there singing the rah-rah message, but when you speak, some really insightful things come out.
Gosh, I wish my husband had thought of that.
Yeah. Congratulations. I don't know if Connie said this, but you also raised a family here in Speedway and now helping to raise grandchildren.
Yes.
And that's great. We brought one of them with you tonight.
It's a joy.
Yeah. Is there anything you'd say?
Nothing, no. It's all come from the heart and it's mostly to just make sure there's opportunities out there for children. And that's what my whole purpose in life has been.
Yeah.
Okay.
I've touched a lot of children, by the way, through Wheeler. I know two of mine, for sure, so, thank you.
And before you walk away, you already know, I can't let you go without saying something about what you do for the Sister City Group. You are behind the scenes and no one has any idea of the amount of hours, the emails, the phone calls, the planning, everything that you do.
Well, thank you.
And I know I've mentioned it before, but you do a tremendous job.
Thank you.
And this is just a small honor to show our appreciation for that. You do a wonderful work.
It's a wonderful program.
Yes, it is.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nancy. Item seven on the agenda is a request for temporary street closure. Darren, if you want to come forward, please. You were here a couple of meetings ago and talked about your event and we've kind of settled on, I think we need to put it to council vote, but we've kind of settled on you're hosting this bicycle event on Sunday, June 11th. You want to talk a little bit about it?
Yes, we are requesting approval to have the six annual Speedway Cycling Grand Prix on Sunday, June 11th. Racing will begin at 9:00 AM and conclude at 2:00 PM. It will follow a very similar format that we've done in the past five years with racing starting basically on every hour with a 15-minute break in between. We'll be utilizing the Speedway Police Department for traffic control. And we will utilize the same agreement that we've had in the past with reimbursement on those costs. The street department will be supplying barricades on a flatbed trailer, which we will then take to where they need to be placed on the course. And then at the end of the event, we will gather all those back up and place them back onto the flatbed trailer so that they can be picked up the following day.
That's great. So you'll be setting up the course and all those barricades, as you said. The event's from approximately 9:00 to 2:00. I think you had also mentioned you have races that start pretty much on the hour. And between the end of the race and the start of the next race, there's time for pedestrians and vehicles to make it across, for sure. And then also maybe breaks in the action when they're on the opposite side of the course.
Yes, the first four events, the racing will be 45 minutes. So there's going to be a 15-minute break between the first race and the second race and so on. And then the last race, the elite race, will be 60 minutes. But typically during a race, it's, the course is not littered with cyclists. It's typically a pack going around the course. So there's probably a 30 to 45-second period each lap that we control access across the course. But for the next 90 seconds to two minutes, it's completely open for people to cross and do what they need to do.
Yeah. Great. Any questions from the council or?
Racing starts at 9:00. About what time will you actually start setting up the course?
Typically, we start about 90 minutes before we start setting up the course. As far as the finish line, we will probably be setting that up a little earlier, probably two to three hours before the race. But that won't involve road closure or anything like that. We typically have our finish line, our stage podium area located in the parking bay. So it does not impede traffic.
You've arranged with Foote to utilize their parking lot for a lot of your vehicles and some of that?
We have utilized that in the past. I don't believe we utilized Foote last year, if I remember serves me correct, but I think the year before that we did. Really depending on their schedule, whether it's compatible with what they have going on.
Great.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the request for temporary street closure on Sunday, June 11th.
Second. Right. We have a motion to close Main Street and several streets around it in order to host bicycle race on June 11th, 9:00 to 2:00, with setup and tear-down times afterwards. Any comments or questions from council? Any from the audience? All those in favor of approving this request, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? June 11th.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. If you would, Darren, please work with Jason and Police Department.
I will contact him tomorrow.
Yeah, please do. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next item is Resolution 2017-10. It's a resolution concerning Speedway Rosner LLC. Tim, you want to come forward on this one?
Good evening, council. For the record, Tim Gropp, the Economic Development Director for Town Speedway. The resolution and the accompanying easement that is before you is in regards to the Rosner redevelopment project. During construction, there was a variance on the floor height in the building that required the accessibility ramp and the stairs to enter the building to encroach on the city easement of the sidewalk in front of it. To remedy this, without having to take out the entire floor and redo the entire building, we requested an easement be recorded, a perpetual easement that has, that requires the owners and all future owners to handle all maintenance, upkeep, and indemnify the town of Speedway for any issues that might come up, as well as make sure that it's visible and is handled in all snow, everything else associated with us. Basically washing our hands of having to do anything with this moving forward since it is encroaching on our easement. And that this will be recorded so that it goes, even if the building transfers, it stays recorded with the property, so it'll never go away. So are there any questions?
If, whether it's current owner or a future owner, if they don't take actions according to this resolution, what are our potential actions or recourse?
That's a good question. We would be able to close off the access to the building until there's a remedy because it is on our easement. So if they're not maintaining the easement as requested, we can either correct the problem and bill them. I should also mention that all costs associated to creating and recording this easement are on the property owners as well. So this was their mistake that we're finding a solution for and that they're taking care of it and they will cover us. But if there ever is an issue where they're out of compliance with the easement, they will be required to, we will simply block it off or correct it for them and then send them the bill as well.
Before any other questions, we need a motion, correct? We do. Thank you. I'll take one.
Mr. President, move that we approve Resolution 2017-10 as presented.
Second.
So we have a motion for Resolution 2017-10. What are some questions besides the one I just asked?
Tim, the picture it's provided to us, we spoke before the meeting and you said there's some more railing that's gone up?
Yeah, the pictures that were provided, American Structure Point, when they're doing the legal description, came out and took pictures of it for our packet. We have since requested that there's some additional smaller rails. There's a step that's kind of hard to see. So additional rails have gone up since those pictures that were provided, but we're also going to keep an eye on it. And if we don't think that the visibility's good enough, we have the ability to require them to, whether it's paint it yellow or put some striping on there, some reflective tape, because that is along what will be a busy sidewalk and it does encroach into what we were hoping to have as a big pedestrian walkway. So we want to make sure that because it's an oddball step that people are able to see it, because even if we're indemnified and they have insurance coverage for us, it's still part of our right of way. So we want to make sure that it's covered. So we're going to keep an eye on it. We're going to see how the railings pop out the visibility. And if we require additional markings on it, we will do that as well.
So if the pictures are submitted, there's actually two ramps, is that?
Yeah, there's.
One north, one south to the different doors.
There's a handicap accessible ramp and then there's just a staircase then or another portion of the property as well. That's one that, the staircase alone is one that had additional railings as well. Make sure you can see it.
So that is more to the south?
Are those installed? Yeah, those have been installed.
Okay. So that's the one to the south?
Correct.
The one to the north, there's actually a step up. Will that also be marked or?
Wendell, do you? Bring Wendell up. He's kept an eye on it for us, too.
What we've asked the group down there is to make it all ADA compliant. That's why you see the ramps, the way they're designed and everything, that they have access and the railing protects those people from stepping back off the height of that. So we worked for engineering and Will Cox and the group there to make sure it's all ADA compliant. And the step down is for the other people to step up and step into the building. We have about an eight-inch, seven or eight-inch difference there. So we worked with everyone to get it compliant. And like Tim was saying, is get it back in their hands with their engineers and our engineers agreeing on it.
So I apologize to those who might be watching on camera, but, or on TV. This northern ramp, is there railing on the north end of that that's not shown in this picture that was taken some time ago? If you want to come look at it, you can.
Yes, please.
You can take it back with you if you like. I drew one in there. I'm just kind of curious, a couple of us are curious whether there's a railing on it.
Down at the north end of the ramp system, they did put in additional railing there.
Okay.
And then the other steps that are installed, the step downs, there's additional railing on that also to let people identify that there is a step area there. So both of those have been installed.
Great. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions from the council? Any from the audience?
I want to make sure we have the one, I know we spoke about the step that leads up, but you said that is going to be marked. I'm sorry, I was doing my hand modeling for the cable there. That's going to be marked. So I think we're wanting some kind of marking because it's kind of.
What we've requested is to have these all installed and we will continue to monitor them if we have to put a striping on them.
Okay.
With all of our street lighting and the business lighting and everything, it should identify.
I'm glad you answered the question, that didn't make any sense. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Again, any from the audience? All those in favor of approving Resolution 2017-10 as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's 5-0. All right. Tim, while you're up, or come back up.
I knew that was going to happen.
Is this your first presentation?
Second.
Second.
Absolutely. A few updates here. I want to make the public aware that this Thursday, the Economic Development Commission will be having a public hearing and consideration of the bond ordinance for the Will Shaw project. This is one of the last public opportunities to speak on the project. The last step, if approved on Thursday, would be to come back to the council for final approval. And then there's a bunch of financing steps that are on the backside after that. So there's also a special zoning hearing meeting tomorrow night at 7:00 PM on some variances as well. So those are a couple of the final, final steps left on the Will Shaw project to move forward. We're excited to keep working through all the process. There is a groundbreaking, May 17th at 11 o'clock. I sent out an invite today, so, for the courtyard by Marriott that will be going up near the interchange and near the newly opened Starbucks as well. So put a plug in for that as well. So we hope that you're all able to make it on May 17th. I've spoken to the hotel group, MHG, Mansour, and they are very excited about getting this started. They're excited to get ground broken. In fact, they're probably going to break ground prior to us going out there to break ground. Everything's just going through final approval. So as soon as they get those permits in hand, they're going to get everybody mobilized and out there. So we're excited to see that progress happen.
That's great news. We have taken out so many motel rooms, room keys, it, was it 120-room hotel?
Yeah.
So we're going to put back in about 10% of what we've taken out. We'll just keep moving from there.
Yep.
Courtyard's a great motel, or great hotel.
Much higher-end brands as well. So we're excited about what we're replacing the older motels with, definitely. And then also, you might see, Jacob and I were able to meet with Brixmore on the Speedway Shopping Center. They have a longer-term redevelopment plan, three to four years, I believe, overall, that'll be phased in. But they've actually moved up the first step to 2017. So in the next 30 to 60 days, the B shops that are next to TJ Maxx and Kohl's will be moved. So I think it's Subway, GameStop, and I believe there's one other there as well. And then the next 90 to 120 days, they hope to start demolishing those. And then what will be put in their place is a couple of what I call B boxes as well. So they haven't announced the names, so I don't want to do that as well, take their thunder. But I just wanted everyone to be aware, you're probably going to see some activity at the Brixmore Speedway Shopping Center. We're excited about it. And it's actually going to happen much sooner than we anticipated, at least Phase 1, understanding that this is a multi-year redevelopment that they're going to be working on. We're going to continue to meet with them. We have a follow-up meeting coming up soon. So just didn't want anyone to be taken off guard if you see a demo crew coming in there and start tearing down some shops. It was planned.
Quick question. Do you know, you may not know this, but do you know if Subway and GameStop are staying in Speedway?
I believe, I believe they are. I believe they're getting moved down towards the Kroger complex.
Okay.
Yeah. So the intent is to give them plenty of time to move. So if anybody's looking for them, they're going to be in the process of moving in the next 30 to 60 days, is what I understand. So those conversations have already had. That's not a shocking development for anyone from this meeting. But I just wanted the public to be aware, the council to be aware, that there is going to be some progress on redeveloping. And just, a lot of it's sprucing up, making it look a little nicer, changing out signs and cleaning up some of the facades. But it'll be a phased project, but starting very soon.
That's great news.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Police Chief Jim Campbell with his bottle of milk.
Yep. Well, first of all, I'd like to turn custody of the milk.
On behalf of the department head.
(laughing).
That was very kind of Doug Bowles and the council. First of all, Mini Marathon Saturday was very successful.
Started off a little cold and rainy, but ended up with sunshine. The Grand Prix this Saturday, May 13th, I think we're ready. So according to Doug, it's going to be a great event. We have an applicant process that we announced. Thus far, we have 150 candidates. We assume they have till May 26th to apply. So we've also today posted the promotion process and they'll have until May 19th for officers to apply for sergeant or lieutenant. Last one is, Shred It was a success. I don't know if you remember that Saturday, but it was a deluge. You know, I have to thank the VIPs, the alumni and the reserves. It was a pretty rainy day. We raised $6,030, which again, was more than we've done in the past. You know, the people bringing things didn't have to get out of their cars, but the people taking it got pretty wet. So, you know, that's just the kind of folks that I think we have that volunteer to help crime stoppers and goes to a very good cause.
What's your secret to marketing? That's a lot of money in such a lousy day.
I don't know. They came from everywhere. You know, they backed up on Lynnhurst, just like it was a sunny day. So, went well. That's it.
Great. Have a good month, Chief. Fire Chief Bob Fishburne.
Thank you. I want to also thank the council because it's great to be a part of all the experience that's behind me. It's really a good team, but you know, you guys have been leading us through some of this too. I really appreciate Monty and all the work he does. Jacob, you drink that milk tonight before you go to bed and may not be at work tomorrow. I'm looking really, I'm looking forward to spending the next three weekends with Jim Campbell. You know, we up there together. I think we're ready. Really appreciate the work that Chief Lynch has done to prepare us for the operational side of that. He, Chief Lynch just celebrated his second year, so he's been with us two years and I want to congratulate him on that. Our bike teams and our cart teams were out for the mini. For us, a cool day that's a little rainy is actually great, you know? Not just for us, but for the EMS people. And then, ending in sun is great. So, just ready for the month of May. Sunday, we had 12 or 13 six-year-olds for a birthday party at the station that we had given to a fundraiser for a women's shelter. And a family paid for the fundraiser and I want to thank Sea Shift for handling that and you may have seen some of that stuff on Twitter, so. Thank you, guys. Any questions?
All right. Have a good month.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you. Street Department, Wendell Walters.
Good evening again, councilors. Just some updates on the department. I would like to also echo the thank you for recognizing us.
I told you.
Be prepared.
You knew there was going to be a bottle of milk.
Well, I thought you was going to, you know, pour it over your head or something. But thank you again for that. It was very appreciated. On our...
Wendell?
Yes, sir.
Sorry, I have to say, the meeting's not over yet. And you did hand over the milk.
Oh, it's true. Everybody get their cameras ready. Just on our projects, the Main Street Storm Project is complete. We're working through our punch list now. It's doing what we designed it to do. We have always a punch list that we'll walk through and get those completed, so you'll see some activity still down in that area. The 72-inch sewer project is done. It's under warranty work now. We've got some asphalt issues and we got all the seed and straw down, so with all the rain that we've had, we should see grass here any day now, so. We're out getting ready for the race events, supporting the police and fire on their needs and wants and making everything, getting everything spruced up, sweepers, painting, everything else that goes along with us, inviting all of our guests. On the storm issues, we did pretty good. I only had two phone calls with some basement issues, but overall, with the amount of rain, seven inches plus in the last week, we did real good. Our dry run project proved that it is working. The other things that we've been doing throughout the years, they're starting to show that they're working. We're not there yet, but we're getting there, so. Appreciate your input and support on all these projects.
That's great. That's great. Could you just take a second and talk about the work you did and how that really impacted a seven-inch rainfall, which is probably a five-year rainfall anyway?
Over the years, we've did sewer separation projects to get the storm water down to the creeks and the BMPs. We've done small projects in neighborhoods to get the water to move to the storm systems. Even the 30th Lane, we did a small project up there that moves that water out of the back of the neighborhoods, back over. Not 100%, but we're getting there. But the dry run project, working with the engineering, Burke Engineering there, they come up with a design and made a basin that will capture the water. It lets it disperse into that channel, gives it time to catch up, rundown. It kind of equalizes the amount of water that's coming from the north down to us. Then, when things start settling down, it moves into Little Eagle Creek and then into Eagle Creek itself, so. It's taken us some time. I've been with this department 11 years and every year, we've tried to make an improvement in our system, sanitary or stormy, either one. So, we're working at it. We're not 100%, but we're getting there.
Way to go.
Thank you.
Have a good month.
Uh-huh, thank you.
Water Works Department, Steve Hurst.
Evening, council. Surface plant's running, been online for a couple, three weeks. Got all the bugs worked out. We flushed the distribution system. It's all nice and fresh, so we're ready for May. And that concludes my report for this month. Unless, of course, you have a question.
How many extra gallons on race weekend do you use versus a normal weekend?
Well, last year, we pumped out 4.2 million, which is probably about half a million more than in years past. I don't know what it's going to be like this year, but it'll probably be pretty close.
What do we use in a normal day?
On a normal day, we've been running about 2.2.
So, we double up?
Now, once the summer kicks in, people are watering the grass and so forth, gardening, that'll pick up to probably about 2.4, 2.5, so. We've got plenty of capacity to deal with race fans and stuff.
That's great. Thanks a lot, have a great month.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
And our Water Department, Norm Berry. So, Norm, on the front end, how many gallons do you deal with?
Well, the surface water plant is up and running.
I saw that.
Good evening. I just have a couple of items. Wanted to expand a little bit on the dry run diversion project, because if you know me, I kind of like facts and figures and graphs. But with the seven inches of rain that we had, there's a river gauge down at 10th Street for Little Eagle. And so, I've always monitored that. That's why I've got a USGS gauge, so over the years, I've watched that. And when we have localized flooding, I mean, that gauge, the flood stage is six feet and I've seen it at nine, 10. And that's when we would usually see localized flooding on the north end. At the end of April, when we had the first four inches of rain, it didn't even make it to flood stage, which is six feet. This last episode, first part of May, it only barely got over six feet. So, I'm pretty sure that in the past, with these conditions that we had, that we probably would have seen localized flooding. So, the project's a major success. To expand on that a little further, the engineer from Burke Engineering, he gave a presentation, an update, at the last Stormwater Management Board meeting concerning the status of the flood map revisions. I know there's been a lot of questions from the public on where we're at on that and what that means timetable. I would encourage people to go to the Speedway Access Channel YouTube website and punch up that video, take a look at it. He gave a pretty good update. But what it basically boils down to is that in order to get the approvals from the regulatory agencies, DNR, FEMA, we're probably still looking at nine to 12 months out. So, it's still going to be a long process. So, I would encourage everyone, keep your flood insurance up. And even when this project's completed, just keep in mind that it's basically designed for like a 10-year storm event, 10 to 20. You know, if we have a 50-year storm, 100-year storm, who knows what conditions we might have, so. You know, just keep that in mind, you know, talk to your insurance companies or whatever. But the main thing right now is just to find out how these flood map revisions come out and who's out and who's in. Last thing is, I wanted to report that the Farley Sanitary Sewer Rehab Project's completed and we came in $138,000 underbid. That's it.
Or, how did the plant do during the rain? We talked about the plant, any overflows or? I know we had a lot of...
We didn't fare as well as dry run diversion, let's put it that way. Yeah, we had several overflows. We, it's just, they lose a flow coming in. We did everything we could to handle it, but the bright side is that we did meet, it did meet the design criteria that the CSO system was designed for, so.
That seven inches of rain you mentioned, what timeframe was that?
From April the 28th through May the 6th.
It's a lot of rain.
It's a lot of rain.
So, I asked Steve a question about how much more water we use on race day. I'm assuming you actually treat more than that with folks bringing cans and bottles and stuff.
Mr. President, you want me to talk about ammonia again, do you?
No, I just want the volume.
Oh, the volume. We usually increase about three, between three and four million gallons on race day.
Wow. That's a lot of soda pop.
I wish.
Thank you. Have a great month.
Thanks.
We'll move on to item 10 on the agenda. Monty Combs, you have a report and a request.
Thank you, sir. I've submitted to yourself and the council the claims that I usually will, I regularly say are regular and they are regular. But tonight, it's from April 22nd through May the 5th, last Friday, and appreciate your approval.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the claims as presented by Clerk Scherzer.
Second.
Motion to approve the claims. Any questions or comments? Any from the audience? All those in favor of approving the claims as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's five zero.
On the utility adjustments, I presented those two years well. We keep this to the minimum we can. We did have a change in one of our vendor sending down our billings. Unfortunately, they had a software that just would not behave, so to speak, and sending them to other people within families when it should have gone to the people here in town. And I don't know what software that is, but they could never explain it and we, in a local resident here, his grandson happens to be a pretty famous basketball player in Utah, and his bills were sent to Utah for his grandson to payment, to pay it. That might be a good idea, but that wasn't the intent of the grandfather, so. But anyway, that's our list for the same period of time, from 4/22 through 5/5.
Mr. President, I move that we approve adjustments presented by Clerk Scherzer.
Second.
Motion to approve the adjustments to our utility billing. Any comments or questions? From anybody from the audience want to make comments? All those in favor of approving the adjustments as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This passes five zero. Anything else to report, Monty?
Just, we're on our new financial software is out there. We've been working on it and it's, there have been some challenges since we implemented it the first of January, but it's now working the way it should. And I know the department heads, I've shared that with them, so they can see where they stand on real-time of where they stand on their budget. And they, it's working well. They don't have to depend on getting reports instead of looking at real-time data. Jacob, spent some time with him and he had problems being able to sign on because I managed to give him the wrong... Password, yeah. That one capital letter, what's the big deal? We got in there and everything's fine, so, thank you.
Great. I know it's a busy month for you. Is there any particular suggestions or whatever for permitting for those vendors of the race or anything that might be residing in the town?
Last year, we managed to have a fight right there in the lobby of all the peddlers, but I don't know what that, these guys knew each other for 25 years and go to different events and they decide to fight in our building. I don't understand that. But other than that, just stay patient and we'll get things done. I think we do a great job. My staff does a great job in issuing those permits in very quick time and really works out well. But we'll keep everything calm the best we can and try to not bother Chief Campbell's staff or any kind of fights, but.
Great. Have a great month yourself.
Thank you, we'll try.
Our town manager, Jacob, do you have anything to report this evening?
Thanks, Mr. President. First of all, I'm not going to be chugging the milk, just so if you want to dunk it later, it's going to be all yours. Yeah, well, I am close to being able to say that I've been in the job in terms of months instead of just weeks, so I'm coming up on that timeline, which is exciting. Obviously, still learning a lot and we've been bragging about the department heads all night, I feel like, for you. And then Doug Bowles came in and bragged about them and I guess I'll just pile on. They've been helping quite a bit to shorten the learning curve, so appreciate their help and the guys that work for them very much. And of course, we're going to jump right into May, which I've had some people question if I'm crazy for jumping into this right now, but I view it as a really great learning opportunity. It's an exciting time for this town and so, exciting time of the job. I will talk about a couple of events that happened over the past couple of weeks. We had Taste of Speedway, which is a really fun event. If you haven't gone or didn't go this year, I highly recommend it, it's really cool. And wanted to thank people that came up and talked. Tim and I manned a booth, Connie made us man a booth and we didn't have anything exciting to give out. We didn't have a cool dish or anything, we just had water. But people still came up and talked to us, which was great, and introduced themselves and so, for everybody that did, thank you very much. It was nice to meet people and obviously want to keep doing that. And then, I also have the pleasure of bragging on our town a little bit here. We had this past week, the Small Business Administration Administrator, Linda McMahon, came and visited the town and it was a great visit. She cannot have been more excited to be in Speedway. She gave a great speech at the IEDC Awards in front of people who were literally from all, every corner of the state were getting awards. And I mean, it was just Speedway this, Speedway that. David, you were there. I don't know, like I was telling the council earlier, if we had written it for her and said, here, just say this, I don't think we could have made it more pro Speedway or bragged more about the town, so it was really neat to see. We had, she visited Speedway and our karting. She, we couldn't get her in a cart, she didn't go for that, but we did get her down to Big Woods. She sampled some beers, which she, I think one she said was the best beer she'd ever had in her life. I think we had on camera that she said that. And it was, it was just, it was a really neat event. Obviously, we, you know, did a tour of IMS and they were very helpful and supportive there and Sarah Fisher did some hot labs. But it was a really cool event to see, just, you know, everything from Wendell and his crew went out the morning of to make sure everything was picture perfect and we're going to get all the good PR and press that, that as we had all the people down there that they would show off well, as well as the small business owners that helped out to host in IMS. Just really neat to see everybody come together and a really cool event for the town, really a lot of good press and coverage for all the hard work that's been going on on our Main Street. And yeah, I'll end on that positive note. Thanks.
That's a good one to end on. Thanks for just a team effort on that. I happened to be the tail end of the full-day event and the compliments that she was giving out to us as a community was huge. I think someone from the SBA told me that day that there's been something like nine or 10 small business loans, and we're talking about small business loans that could be up to 30, $40 million. Not in all these cases, but a couple of the loans that are going around the state, Big Woods is an example, we're talking significant resources. And there's nine or 10 loans just here on Main Street that have been given to either existing or new Speedway businesses, so it's fantastic. So, next item on the agenda would be a report from councilors. Councilor Fisher?
I really have not much to report, but just obviously, month of May is extremely busy for our town employees, so as a community, as the eyes and ears of our town, you know, make them aware if they see something that they need to reach out to one of the department's heads to let them know, so. Because those guys work really hard. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilor Delisle?
Not much for me, other than hope everybody enjoys the month of May. Stay safe.
Councilor Lindsey?
I'll just touch very briefly on what Jacob said, the SBA, I got to attend that event, wonderful event. I think Jacob summed it up very well, but made the town shine and thank everyone who was involved in that. It was a great, great event. That's all I have.
Vice President Matthews?
Just real quick, wish everyone a fun and safe month of May. A lot of activities going on in town, from the porch parties, rocking on Main, racing through the decades is this Friday, so great events to get out and enjoy. I probably will be missing the next town council meeting, so I just want to wish everyone a great month of May.
Thank you. It is going to be, it is already an exciting month and just my final comments, I want, I see Mr. and Mrs. Jen here, they live on 16th Street and a couple of weekends ago, I was invited by Shirley and some other members of Cunningham Neighborhood Association to come visit. Jacob actually, our town manager, had the opportunity, I think it's his like fifth or sixth day on the job, and we had three police officers stop by and it was a very productive opportunity to just hear questions and be able to respond to those from probably 30, 35 people that live in that neighborhood. And for me, it was, it was just time well spent and I thank them for the invitation and the opportunity to be able to help and just answer questions, so. Here's to a great month of May. It's going to go ahead and adjourn the meeting at 7:48 and just encourage everyone to be welcoming of the million-plus visitors that we have over the next few weeks. This meeting is adjourned.